A special meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In a letter to the Commissioners dated February 12, 2025, and reading as follows. The annual members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a special meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Thursday, February 13, 2025, 2:00 p.m., in the conference room of the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Poseraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interest of the citizens of our county. And, Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
... allegiance to the good life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Van Den Hoven?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
And Chair Melman?
Here. Okay. We'll start off here. Let's see here. Special orders of business, number five. Approve, there was no minutes to approve. On to number six, we need approval of the agenda?
I have an adjustment to the agenda, and it's completely my fault, but I accidentally referred to the item under new business as FOIA number 2506. It should be 2505. It's the email FOIA appeal, but I accidentally put the wrong number. So I apologize. It should be 2505.
Move as amended.
Can I get support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay. Presentation of written communications received and forwarded, there was none. Number eight, report to standing statutory special committees and others. None. Public comment on agenda items. Any public comment on agenda items?
And I can also say that we have no remote public comment either. I'm looking right now, and there is no remote public comment on agenda items.
Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, we will move on to committee reports. There was none. For nine, general orders of business, unfinished business, which is FOIA appeal, number 2506.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I am declaring a conflict of interest and recuse myself from this conversation.
Okay.
Okay. Is it all right if I?
If you want to start it off?
Yeah, I would like to, if that's okay. So FOIA appeal 2506 is the appeal that references interviews, notes, recordings, and so forth from Attorney Graham. We originally heard this appeal at, as the head of the public body, on January 21st. We had a 10-day extension, which would have taken us to Mar- is that right? March. What is today?
February.
February, thank you. Jeez. February 3rd, February 3rd, we asked for the, or we had 10 days originally, and then on, when we heard it, we extended an issue of notice for 10 days because we had to search or collect for documents from multiple offices. And that gave us the 10-day extension, which brings us to February 14th. By 4:00 p.m. tomorrow, we have to respond, and that's why we're here today. And so what is important here is what is our role at this point as the head of the public body, is we must make a determination, and we have three items that we can take, we have three actions that we can take. One is to reverse the denial. Two is to uphold the denial. And three is to reverse the denial in part. Those are the three actions that we can take, and we must take one of them. So because the original appeal, or I'm sorry, the original denial was based on not, that the documents didn't exist, so that was the basis for the denial, the documents do not exist. But we do believe the documents exist. They're with an outside office with Attorney Graham, and we have extended a notice to him to turn over those documents. So really, what the denial should have been was we weren't in possession of the documents. So I would make a motion that, at this point, we reverse the denial, which will allow our Attorney Graham to provide the documents, and then our FOIA coordinator to go through the documents, determine what's exempt and non-exempt, and release whatever documents are non-exempt. So I would make the motion that we reverse the denial for FOIA appeal number 2506, and that would be the action that we would take. And then that way, we have lots of time to, you know, get the documents from Graham, go through them. Our FOIA coordinator can take the time necessary to separate exempt from non-exempt and so forth.
Can I get a second on that?
A second. I had a question for discussion. Does that change with that denial portion coming out? And you said there's, it's like an open-ended window then, correct? Where we have lots of time?
Well, I wouldn't say it's open-ended. What we have to do is get the documents from Graham, but we have a, we, as the head of the public body, have a timeline. And so this is our timeline. We have, we have to take one of these actions. Once we've taken that action, then we're in the process of fulfilling that, that request with these documents that, once we get in possession, need to be separated. That can take time. So unfortunately, I've been a part of an appeal that is, you know, years long. I don't, I don't anticipate that here, but FOIA appeals can take time. But our timing, that our action, is what's under a time constraint, so. Does that make sense? Does that answer that?
Yeah, no, no, it does. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that if we're going to reverse the denial, and because there's the possibility of those existing somewhere else, even though we don't possess those.
Correct.
Right. And that, you know, is it one of those that, you know, I don't want it to be where, okay, yep, it's, you know, two years later, we're still, still asking them, you know?
I would certainly, yeah. And I certainly would hope that we wouldn't agree to that sort of thing, because we can, we as a county, as a public body, we have ways in which we can compel that information be provided to us. And so we have directions we can go, but that's not what we would do here today. So we would, we would reverse the denial with this motion. We would reverse the denial, and then we don't have to, you know, we, we don't have to worry about, we have to meet this timeline. We have to do one of these actions. And so reversing the denial makes the most sense to me, because the denial was based on some, on that they don't exist, and that's not, we don't think that's true. We believe they do exist, they're in a different office, so.
Any more discussion?
Does our legal department also concur with that assessment?
I don't know.
I'm not prepared to respond to that specifically. I wasn't sure, and so I do have thoughts, but with regard to that specific, I personally am not aware of procedurally what happens once the denial is reversed, how, where things restart, or how much time that gives.
There's no time constraints at that point. As long as we are actively pursuing the documents, we are within compliance. We can, as a county board, and as, as you as legal representation, could compel, through whatever means you have, for this person to give the documents in a certain timeframe, but there's no, there's no clock ticking within FOIA.
And again, I'll take the Commissioner's word for it. I was not prepared to address that specific issue today. No.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
And then the release of the documents, that would be everything that is not attorney-client privilege, or?
When the documents arrive from Graham, our FOIA coordinator has to do her job in going through those documents and separating exempt from non-exempt, and then would release whatever is non-exempt. Yeah.
Any more questions? Any more questions? Hearing none? We do have a motion. We've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Hey, new business. Uh, seek a second opinion from MMRMA regarding exempt emails related to FOIA 25-05.
So I asked to have this on the agenda, and I apologize for having the wrong number on our, I'm sure that was confusing. What I would like to see, I did go through every single one of these emails that had been exempted, and relative to what was, what our FOIA coordinator exempted previously and denied access, there's some discrepancy for me. And there's a, there's a few of them that I really do feel like it would be important to get a third-party opinion, someone who is not a county employee, to give us advice on a few of the emails. And I think at that point, we can then make a decision that we're going to have to make, which I think is just this next week. Yeah, this next week. So, yeah, well, 4:00 p.m. on the 18th is when we have to, we have to do the exact same thing we just did with 2506 for 2505 by the 18th. But I did meet with Ashley. We had a nice conversation yesterday. I tried, I wanted to understand the process that she had gone through to arrive at the decisions that were made, and, and we resolved several of them, but there are a few that I just feel we would benefit greatly from having a third-party opinion on. And the rule, I believe, it's rule number 4.52235 in our Rules of Procedure. If I want to speak with an attorney, I have to get the board's approval to do so, and so that's why I added it to the agenda, and I'm seeking that approval, so that I can speak with. Ashley had shared with me that MMRMA has a FOIA expert of, within that organization, and so I think it would be beneficial to have a conversation about a few of these emails, so.
Would that be something you guys would work?
Oh, absolutely. We would, yeah, we would have to work together on it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
So first of all, we need a motion, so we can?
So I would make a motion to, to allow myself to have a conversation with FOIA expert through MMRMA.
A support.
Okay.
Any, any discussion?
What's the cost to the county?
That I'm not sure.
I'm not aware of the rates.
Yeah, I don't know either.
So before I would lend my support, I would want to know the cost associated with such support.
Is there any way to figure that out? Or could we maybe put a cap on it even?
You could do a cap, absolutely. I just, I'm going to log in.
I was going to say, take, take, take a few minutes and?
Just to get an estimate of where it's at? Because we saw it out legal counsel before.
Okay.
And then I've got, I've got more, you've got time.
Okay, good.
And then what, so we're basically saying that we have an opinion from our legal counsel, letting us know of decisions on the FOIA request, but you want a second opinion, to what end?
It's just they're very specific emails. There are a few very specific emails that I think it needs to be a non-county employee who makes, who gives us an opinion on it. And it may come up to be the same as what our prosecuting attorney has come up with. And actually, technically, Ashley, I don't recall, were all of the emails reviewed by the prosecuting attorney's office?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
So shouldn't we go through that step before we request a second opinion?
I was specifically looking for someone who's not a county employee.
Well, I know, but shouldn't we go for?
And specifically not our prosecuting attorney.
I guess I don't understand the benefit of, I would think the person filing the appeal would want to push for that more than us on the commission.
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, because, like, we, we have our legal counsel. We trust our legal counsel with their decision. If there's an email that's not being released, wouldn't it be up to our, the appellate, to decide, like, hey, I want to go after that email?
I guess one thing with that, if, and I might be reading into that, if that, those individual emails we're seeking third-party counsel on made reference to that department, then there would naturally be a conflict with that department reviewing them, and thereby we would realistically want a third party to look at it, because that party would already be involved.
So is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I mean, that's?
I just, I just didn't understand, like, why would we take a second opinion of an opinion we already paid for, just because it might differ from one we might personally want to see?
If it, if it's, that's, and I'm, I'm making inference here, that that would be the reason we wouldn't go there first, is because whatever department?
That is correct.
Did our legal counsel advise that it was a conflict of interest for them?
That's what I just asked Ashley, and she said no.
Okay. So, and we don't trust our legal counsel with that judgment? Am I reading that right?
I think, I, my opinion is that it would be a conflict of interest for our prosecuting attorney to give an opinion on an email that is about the prosecuting attorney.
But our prosecuting attorney didn't say that, correct?
I, that's what I just asked Ashley.
Yeah, and that's what Ashley said was no. So if Ashley said that the prosecuting attorney didn't say there's a conflict of interest, then I, I mean, I'm always forced to trust our legal counsel, that's what we pay her for.
So we could, I guess, the option then, since they haven't seen it, would be to, we could amend the motion, I guess, to have it first go through. If they determine it's a conflict of interest, move with, or be because of the timeline when that has to?
Is that possible right now, Ashley? Or Beth, maybe you can answer. Is Lauren available?
Yes.
Is she?
She told me she could be available, unless we want to ask Beth?
Yeah, do you?
Beth is here.
I'm not sure if there are things that you want reviewed. If you certainly can bother, I'm not sure if you're literally talking about right now, or if you're just talking about?
Could, would it be okay, could, could she come to the microphone so we could ask the questions? And this is a, this is a, it's going to be a challenging question, because with FOIAs and FOIA coordinators and so forth, there's very, very little case law about conflict of, conflicts of interest relative to FOIA. So that's a, that's going to be really challenging. But would you, would you see a conflict if emails that were exempted that specifically have to do with the prosecutor's office? I mean, I don't even know how to ask the question. Would, uh, I'm trying to think of how I'd ask this question. Let me think. If there's emails that, uh, I don't, because you have to be careful, you know? We have to be careful, because if these are exempt, you know, we don't want them to be disclosed right now. So asking certain questions is challenging. I'm not sure how to phrase this.
And if I may, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yeah, please.
I, I could be wrong, because I was not in on the particular discussion, but it sounds like Ashley may have already had the conversation with Prosecutor Wickman about whether or not our office would be conflicted out, and if that's the case, I would defer to Prosecutor Wickman's, I guess, opinion on that. I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't have anything more to add to whatever her opinion may have been. I'm confident that she would have looked at the issue thoroughly, but if that's not the case.
And that's what I was asking earlier. I don't think that's the case.
I did not have a direct question, like, if there was a conflict of interest, no.
Okay. So the exempted emails, all the emails that were exempted, you, you made that decision. It wasn't with legal counsel?
Some of them were.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But not all of them. I think your question was, did I review all of the emails with legal?
Right. Well, that, I think that was Patrick's.
Well, then, I just, if, why go to another legal counsel if we haven't done our due diligence with the current legal counsel? So if there's some legal counsel hasn't viewed, why would we say, okay, new legal counsel, here's everything, and here's part that they didn't get?
Yeah, I think we're under, we're under a clock. That's part of it, because it only gives us Monday, or Friday tomorrow.
Yep.
So we're under a clock. And, yeah, I, I, I believe there are documents in that set of emails that are, that are non-exempt. And, and so I want to make sure that if I make a recommendation to, to the board, that I have done my diligence on reviewing it. And there are only a couple of emails that I just am not comfortable, and I, I just don't feel like we can really have the conversation at this, I just don't. So if you want to, if you guys want to amend it, and have the, our, our prosecuting attorney look at them and say, yeah, we should get a second opinion, then we can do that, but it's, we're under the, we're under the gun, so.
Well, I was going to say, and the other one, depending on what she sees for?
I, I can't find the exact invoice that I was referring to. It happened about three or four years ago. However, I would ask, like, if that we just maybe put a max on there?
Do you remember about how much it was?
I want to say it's, it's, I don't think it's going to be over $6,000.
Okay.
It depends on the depth, of course.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I mean, that, to me, that seems the only way that we could do that, so meet our timeline, would be for the prosecutor's office to review the ones that you have in question. If they determine it's a conflict, they're going to have to get back with our administrator, and then, of course, coordinate with you for MMRMA, and we have a cap, whatever we determine here.
Right.
Otherwise, I mean, if we were to come back here tomorrow at the same time, or, I'll, I'll come in Monday, I mean, I don't care, it's holiday. But that's one where, you know, are we going to come back, just to come back to say, yep, let's do that again, when we can do it now, and actually put that process in a motion to be able to give that, that decision by 4:00 o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
I guess that's what I'm looking at.
But if it's not, or if, in our opinion, they're exempt, then we're not out anything anyways. And it's, it'd be up to?
In, in our opinion, who's our?
Legal counsel and the commission's opinion.
Our FOIA coordinator, FOIA coordinator is the one who exempted, not our legal counsel.
I thought she brought some to legal counsel.
I brought some.
Some, but not all.
Okay. So the others that haven't been, haven't even went to legal counsel, whether we bring them to our legal counsel or another legal counsel, we're still under the same deadline.
We are.
And so what's the difference if we're making progress with our legal counsel or another legal counsel?
I'm, I'm fine either way. I just, we have to meet this by 4:00 p.m. on Monday, so.
On Monday or Tues- Tuesday?
What day is the 18th?
Tuesday.
Okay, then that's Tuesday.
So couldn't we just say that our legal counsel looks at it, and, or we just give permission to release all the non-exempt emails?
So what do you mean, all the non-exempt emails?
So?
We already did that.
And so now we're looking for?
It's in the exempted list?
Uh-huh.
So in the exempted list, I went through all the emails that were exempted.
Mm-hmm.
And I do not agree that those are all exempt. So what Ashley is saying is that some of those she got a legal opinion on, but some she made her own decision on.
Mm-hmm.
And so when we met yesterday, and I asked her about, what was your decision? How did you come to the decision on these things?
Mm-hmm.
That, at that point, I said, I feel like we need a second opinion on these emails. And there's a specific set of emails.
So we don't believe our administrator made the right decision?
That is correct. On, on a specific set of emails, that is correct.
But why wouldn't we have the person filing the FOIA request kind of hammer us on that? Why would we do that preemptively?
So if we, if we continue to exempt material that's not exempt, and we uphold the denial, the person requesting, the next step they can take is a judicial, judicial review.
Mm-hmm.
That judicial review will end up on a judge's bench, and a judge will do an in-camera review of all the documents. And if they find non-exempt material, now we pay the person's attorney fees and a punitive damage for not disclosing information that we should have disclosed, because it was non-exempt.
But she could do that anyways, and it could, the same result could happen.
Sure, but why wouldn't we do the right thing now and try and avoid being sued for judicial review?
Because I feel we should do it through our lawyers first, and then the next set of lawyers. If they find?
Do what?
Yeah. Do the review and decide, is what is exempt actually exempt?
Okay. And I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as they can meet this deadline.
So, and that was where I was going with that very thing. If they, if they're going to go to our prosecutor first, and I mean, we know what the timeline is, so they have a real short suspense to be able to go through those. If they determine that there's a conflict with them, with that being able to make a fair and impartial decision on that, then we have to go to the?
And I, and I would amend my motion to seek legal opinion on a certain set of emails within this grouping of emails, and if, if they, if they uphold the attorney-client privilege, I would ask for a second opinion.
Okay. And then I guess the other part is we need a, we were looking at a cap thing, right?
Do we, who had a second on that?
You seconded it, but I've amended, I've just amended my motion.
Right, but we talked about having a cap on it, though.
I would be comfortable if, once we go through legal counsel, then it's kind of like, yeah, if they decide, it's, I mean, we, like, Commissioner Williams said, we need to get it done.
Yep.
But as long as we go through our legal counsel first, I don't feel the need for a cap, because it needs to get done. If we were to not use our legal counsel, then I would say, wait a minute, I just want to throw money out the window that could be saved with our own legal counsel. So I'd be comfortable without a cap.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm good with that, too. I'll second her amended motion.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay. We will move on to general public comment.
I need to see if anybody?
Do we have anything, Chris?
Hold on, I'm checking.
[laughing].
It, it takes just a second for it to refresh. Oh, there's no remote public comment.
There is no remote public comment?
No, there is not.
Okay. We will move on to commissioner comments.
No comment.
Commissioner Williams, any comments?
Yes, there was something, but I've forgotten. Oh, my goodness gracious. Yeah, I, I'll, if I find it, yeah, because I've forgotten, so go for it.
Commissioner Kelly?
No, thank you.
My only question now is, when do we want to look at set in the next one? Because it'll have to be a special meeting before 4:00 o'clock to be able to process that information one way or the other.
And as long as we're all here?
We need to make that decision, I think, today.
Or we could move the regular meeting to earlier, like 2:00 p.m.? Oh, you can't? No? Okay.
I could, I mean, I could do it if it was from 2:00 to 3:00, but that's it.
Yeah.
Oh, and the meeting, it's a regular meeting, it would be long, so.
9:00 a.m. on Monday works.
But that doesn't? But that doesn't give any, I mean, if we're having a review done, I'd wanna use Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Otherwise, 7:00 and 11:00 PM on Monday.
Does that give legal counsel?
7:00 PM on Monday? What about 7:00 PM on Monday? Oh, I should look at my calendar.
I have a township meeting, but that's, you know, I can?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, 7:00 PM, I can't do. I could do before, but not, not at 7:00.
Oh, I have a, I have a meeting, too. What about not 5:00 PM? No, not earlier?
They work 11 to 7:00 on Monday.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
What about?
Is there, well, you wanted all of, as much Monday as possible, so that?
Otherwise, Tuesday at 9:00.
Oh, what's Tuesday at?
Tuesday at 9:00 AM?
Tuesday morning works for me, yeah.
I'm free.
Yep, works for me as well.
And that's just for the special meeting, right?
That would just be the special meeting.
For what time?
9:00 AM.
Tuesday.
Or that, that, that won't take too long, 'cause I got 11 o'clock.
Oh, I don't think, it's just one, it would be one agenda item, so.
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta work at 10:00.
Okay. Does that work?
Yeah, it works.
Okay.
It's only one item.
And we're just gonna handle that special meeting?
It would just be for the FOIA 2505, FOIA appeal. We have to answer by 4:00 PM on?
Do we need a special meeting, or with all five of us here, can we just schedule it?
You can make a motion to add an additional meeting.
Okay. That way it won't be special.
I do have one question.
Well, it'll be special, but you don't have to go through that other process, 'cause you're all?
All here.
Then I would make a motion.
The LEPC?
Hold on.
Is that, is, is that 10 o'clock, I believe? I, I seen a bunch of invitations yesterday, and I know you both, I think, received those. So I'll make sure that my calendar is correct.
The only thing I have so far for February 18th is this year.
Yeah, 'cause he had that.
LEPC, when does? Let me look at?
What if it's at 10:00? No big deal, we're done by then, 'cause it's a one-item meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, we're finished with this one, and it's only took us?
So what time?
Not LEPC, I'm sorry, it was the emergency.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
And do we know if this, do we know if this room is available?
Nine o'clock?
I'm unsure.
We can always, yeah, okay. All right.
Beth?
Can we check that?
Tuesday.
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 Are you available on Tuesday?
Yep. That gives you more time, too.
Are you available?
Is it possible to do even 9:15? I know?
Yeah.
But it would be helpful.
Yeah.
For instance?
Yeah, yeah.
Every, good on time and date. Then I'd make the motion, we add a additional meeting for February 18th at 9:15 AM.
Perfect. I will second that, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass, we got a meeting. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely.
So our meeting schedule is, we have a county board meeting at 2:18, at 5:15. We have another county board meeting on 3/4 at 5:15. And at the 3/4 March 4th one, I will be just coming home, so I will not be here.
On March 4th?
On March 4th.
Okay.
Then our next scheduled meeting is 3/18 at 20:25 at 5:15. Hey, there is no 30-day notice of appointments. I need a motion to adjourn.
Still moved. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass.